The political influence of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this school meeting a district five forty four to quarter. Can I take all these? I know Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lim.
Here.
Missy Hermes.
Present.
Steven Biggess. We have a forum. Could I get a motion to approve our agenda tonight?
So moved.
A second.
A second then.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Our agenda is approved. Okay, we will move into a public meeting with the world's best workforce and we have Amelia Lamar, curriculum director here to present.
Hello.
Hey. I don't know if you can see this. Thank you. Hi, nice to see you all. I'm so happy you're all together yet this year, so hello. Here tonight to present world's best workforce, so we will just go ahead and get started. So the following information is representative of the 2022-2023, excuse me, school year. Five areas are reported on to the state, all with the intention of supporting our mission statement values and beliefs of Fergus Falls Public Schools. Those five areas that are reported on include school readiness, third grade literacy, closing the achievement gap, career and college readiness, and high school graduation. During the 22-23 school year, we served a total of ninety-four and five-year-olds in our Otter preschool program. Fifteen point five percent of those students received special education services, and sixty-seven point seven percent of those students received free and reduced lunch rates, with fifty-three families on complete scholarships and eight on a reduced rate. We also served over one hundred and fifty families in our early childhood family education courses, also known as ECFE. Of the four and five-year-olds we served in Otter preschool, eighty-six percent redeemed partially or fully ready for kindergarten this year. This compares to the overall seventy-eight percent of all kindergartners who were deemed partially or fully ready for kindergarten. Overall, more Otter preschool students scored as ready for school as all kindergartners combined this fall. Moving on to third grade literacy. Per the spring MCA, excuse me, spring 2023 MCA data, fifty-seven percent of third graders at Cleveland Elementary tested proficient on their reading MCA exam. Further breakdown shows that forty-five point six percent met expectations and eleven point four exceeded expectations. ISD five four four, so that grayish circle right in the middle there, represents IQ and Cleveland combined. So those two combined had a fifty-six percent proficiency rate on that third grade reading MCA. Both of these compare to the forty-seven percent state average of students who scored proficient on their third grade reading MCA. Third grade is the first year that all students take an MCA exam in both math and reading. The district took multiple action steps during the course of the 22-23 school year to evaluate and support the foundational reading needs of all students. As you probably recall, that might include adopting UFLAG for direct U, or excuse me, direct daily phonics instruction, and HIGERTE for direct phonetic awareness instruction. This now is the current first full year of implementation of both of those programs, and there's been nothing but positive feedbacks from teachers and parents alike. We also added RTI for reading in grades K-2 starting this year to provide an additional support option in addition to Title I services. So therefore, students who did not test proficient are continuing to be supported through direct instruction within their classroom, as well as that access through to multiple academic intervention options such as that Title and RTI with math and reading. Nonetheless, we did test above state average in both the number of students who exceeded expectations and those who met expectations. Continuing with third grade literacy. Students in every breakdown do take those MCA reading exams, including special education students with an IPA reading and so on. Of the fifty-seven percent at Cleveland last spring, this is a little bit of a deeper breakdown. So sixty-two point nine percent of non-special education students scored proficient. Twenty-eight point six of English learners scored proficient as compared to fifty-eight point one percent of non-English learners. Additionally, forty-four point six percent of students who qualified for free and reduced lunch prices were proficient, compared to sixty-eight point three percent who did not qualify for free and reduced price meals. Lastly, our proficiency rate is higher than ten of our immediately surrounding school districts. Combined those ten school districts hold an average proficiency in third grade reading of forty-six point seven percent. We outscored them anywhere from two to eighteen percent. There's a lot of numbers that you just now, are you okay?
Yeah, I took it all in.
All right, we'll keep going then. Moving on to closing the achievement gap, so now we're looking district-wide here. Here you can see a breakdown of demographic and other criteria percentages across the district. The majority of our students, at about eighty-three percent, identified as white, fifteen point two percent received special education services, and forty-five point six qualified for free and reduced price meals. Our teachers work very hard every day to provide high-quality instruction to meet the needs of every single one of these students that's present in their classrooms. Bunch more numbers for you. But here you can see the proficiency percentages in both reading and math within each of those breakdowns. So the first table on the left there shows proficiency in reading. The middle column or left set of numbers is the percent proficient here at ISD five four four. So this will include percentages with the ALC and IQ Academy combined. Our students scored higher than the state average in almost all areas. And the second table on the right shows proficiency in math. Again, our students scored greater than the state average in the majority of areas. Just keep in mind that the group size of each category does vary quite significantly. One category might represent less than ten students within our district, while another category could represent a few hundred or more. Nonetheless, both are still compared to the total state average of students within that category. And we will continue, like I said, to provide that instruction that supports each student in each of these categories. Area four refers to career and college readiness. Each student developed a personal learning plan. This includes exploring various career, college, and post-secondary options, identifying their strengths, and exploring course options that would best fit their individual needs and interests. Additionally, we offer a wide variety of courses and electives, such as different tech ed or technical education options such as small engines, woodworking, business. We also offer programs such as a certified nursing assistant or CNA program and work-based learning. Through any route that a student chooses in their personal learning plan, our teachers strive to create opportunities to prepare students for whatever their post-secondary option is. Sorry. Furthermore, our ACT scores and our mean score then composite scores were higher in 2023 than the national average. Area five refers to high school graduation. We offer four options for students to earn a high school diploma. This would include Fergus Falls High School, online at IQ Academy, the Alternative Learning Center or ALC, and post-secondary enrollment options. Note that the following data that you're looking at right now reflects the percentage of students who graduated within four years. Also note that these scores reflect the spring of 2022 graduation rates. Twenty-three rates have not yet been released. So in 2022 then, you can see that eighty-eight percent of students graduated from Fergus Falls High School within four years, forty-seven point five percent from the ALC, which was a ten percent increase from the previous year, and another increase at IQ Academy who had seventy-five percent graduating. The average graduation rate for Minnesota in spring of 22 was eighty-three point six percent. Students who attend the ALC do typically enter that program, known to be a year or more behind for a wide variety of reasons. And our ALC, just want to point out, works very hard to meet each of those students' individual needs while still holding high expectations. The teachers and leaders at our ALC do a truly fantastic job of supporting each of those students, providing a wide variety of opportunities, and helping prepare those students for whatever their life might look like after high school. Overall, we are very proud of our teachers, staff, and students and the hard work that they put in every day. What cannot be demonstrated in this presentation is the dedication that our teachers and staff do have to our students who attend our schools. Additionally, this report does not demonstrate the multiple tested areas who have and continue to score above and beyond seventy percent proficiency and higher. And we do have a lot to celebrate here at Fergus Falls Public Schools. And for our mission statement, we will continue to strive to help each student reach their full potential and be prepared in each of these five areas in our board's workroom. And we will now take any questions from the board. Any question for Amelia?
That's some exciting gains in the past year. Thank you for your dedication to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on then. We have a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to Lori Kethner for her donation to the KSS choir department. Also, thank you to Bethlehem New Current Church for their donation to the Honor Angel Account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals. Could someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Okay, a second please.
Second.
Missy, what do you roll?
Yes. Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lim.
Yes.
Missy Hermes.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Okay. We'll move on to that report then, and we'll start out with Derek Ebron.
Okay. I'll go through this report with you. That covers most of our, what we did this fall. I do have a few handwritten notes on here of some things that just came in in the last couple days or so and haven't normally been part of this fall report, simply because the fall report a lot of times comes a little earlier than this in the school year. It's December already, and so I actually have, I gave you some more information that I've added to this report here. First of all, numbers, again, very, very pleased with where our numbers are at all the way across the board. You're gonna fluctuate a little bit, go up and down just depending on the classes. Naturally, we have bigger classes now, so you would think that there's more coming out. But at the same time, that really says a lot of what's happening at our middle school levels and things where the retention is still pretty high. Couple that I'd like to point out. Football, even though we, you know, the number seems about the same, with, we're actually two less overall than we had last year. It, with the grade dispersment, the encouraging part was keeping the number of ninth graders and tenth graders out so that they could at least partially on their schedule have separate ninth-grade games, separate JV games in varsity like we used to. And the reason that's important is football is one of those sports where size matters. And when you throw the ninth graders out there with older kids, they don't tend to want to stay out as much. And so by having those games for them and being able to do that, really was a step forward for us. Boys and girls soccer too. Already this year, because of the interest and the retention, having over forty kids, we are looking at already adding middle school games for them. Again, that's, soccer's another one that's very physical, especially on the boys' side, where we have a lot of seventh and eighth graders that are making up our JV and they're playing against sophomores and juniors. And there's a big difference between those. So about fifteen to eighteen kids a team, or fourteen to eighteen is about perfect. And when we have forty-five in the mid-forties, that shows us that we're able to do that. So that's been very, very encouraging for those sports. Girls tennis was another one where we had a full middle school team and forty-one girls out. And sport that normally, most schools that we play were in the twenties. And we're talking big sports. Volleyball, their number was the same too. We had CLC schools that are at more than double our size that could not field ninth-grade teams or younger level, especially on the, on the girls' side. And that's been a worry that we talk about often as ADs, what are you doing with your girls' sports? And for Fergus, luckily, right now, that hasn't been an issue. Our female sports have been very strong with numbers and they continue to be. So keeping that, that's encouraging. We, I think there was about four volleyball games this year where teams just didn't have a ninth grade. We already have two basketball games where girls' teams, again, these are big schools. We're not talking the little schools, we're talking the real big ones that don't have ninth-grade teams. They don't have enough girls out ninth through twelve. So that, that hasn't been an issue here. Fall musical, we had twenty-five, plus a lot more beyond that of doing extras. I'll talk about the fall musical in a little bit. Great numbers that are maintaining, our theater has made the comeback that we were worried about after COVID. We're still working on speech, we're still working on some of the other things. That was the biggest hit to us, it wasn't sports. It was COVID, it was the performance, it was the things like that that we needed to. Theater has come back and then some, so we're very happy about that. You can take a look at the things I normally list. We had our sportsmanship, again, something we're very proud of. We, I think it was the last time I was here that I said we officially took over the lead in the Central Lakes Conference, even though we've been in the league quite a few years less than many others, in number of teams getting the sportsmanship. Think it's important to know, and I say this every time, this isn't just the, all these guys are nice, we're gonna vote for them. The, the way it's supposed to work, the coaches, the AD goes to the coach and asks the coach, you ask your players, how were you treated when you went there? How was the opposing crowd? How, when you walked into the building, did you feel welcome? That sort of thing. And then how did they behave on the field? Where us as adults don't see all the little stuff that goes on, how do they feel? And then the players report back and say, this team was the best to compete against, regardless of your record. We had two more teams again out of the seven in the fall. That Fergus Falls won the sportsmanship, both volleyball and also girls swimming and diving. We had a couple state participants, so we were also successful out on the, in the fields of play. Boys cross-country team qualified as a team, a very thrilling cross-country, section cross-country meet. And SA Verstig qualified from the swim team. We had as many as six other swimmers that were under, within one second of making the state tournament. And it just wasn't meant to be for those. So great effort by our girls swim team this year. Not only getting the sportsmen, but having one of their better records in recent history. CLC all-conference honorable mention, again, you can read through those. One thing that's not on there, that we just got everything back for district football. We don't have conference football in state Minnesota, it's all district. So they often don't get included on these reports, especially when I normally do them. So I did just want to point out to you, we did have one all-district player, and that was Henry Bethel for football. And we had two honorable mention all-district, which was Jack Rats, junior, and Levi King, a junior. In fact, they're all juniors. So those guys should have been added to that list, even though it's technically not all-conference. And another stat, now that we got all the, we have all the grades in and everything else, we had thirteen of our seniors, and only seniors qualified for this, which is a scholar athlete. Scholar athlete has to letter in that, sport have, and also maintain a certain GPA. Thirteen, what's about thirty percent of the seniors that participated in a sport this fall qualified as a CLC scholar athlete. We don't have the teams ones back yet as far as the competition, whether bronze, gold, or silver. Again, we do very well. Most schools have two or three plaques. That's covered the last probably ten years. In our last five years, we've already filled three plaques and I had to order two more. So we will have five plaques of the little plates that have all of our academic achievements for our team. So they're, they're doing it again, both in the classroom and outside. On the back, very quickly here, fine arts, the musical. Josephine is a technicolor dreamcoat, amazing technicolor dreamcoat. Unbelievable performance by our directors, our performers, performers at Orchestra Pit. It was very well received. Everyone that I talked to in the community absolutely loved it. And we had by far our biggest crowds all four nights than we've had in several years for this, this musical. You can usually get a lot of people in there, but if it's not done real well or that, whatever, it'll kind of wane. Every night it grew, even the Sunday. I think our biggest performance was Sunday afternoon at two o'clock. So they, they did an unbelievable job. They are very excited about, most of those kids are in one act play now, they've just started practice for that. We are hosting one act play this year, we're back up into the bigger school section. And we are hosting that in late January, so there'll be an opportunity for public performance as well as the actual competition.
Who coaches that?
Ally, Nick Lawson does both. Yep. And so what that is, and what most people don't understand, one act play isn't just a public performance, it's an actual competition. And you have your thirty minutes, it's thirty-two or whatever the exact, your whole set has to fit in a square that's smaller than this area here while you're waiting. You have like a few minutes, you gotta get it on set, boom, you perform, then you have to have it off. And so we're hosting that this year, so it is quite an event, and that's in January. We're in the middle of our concert season, band and choir have completed their winter concerts, and orchestra has theirs on Wednesday, December twenty-first. Other big change that we had this year was using GoFan for online ticketing. It has, it has been very, very good for us. It's, luckily, there are some other schools that have gone to it in the area, four of them in the CLC. GoFan is a different program, it's the biggest one in the nation, but now they've come to Minnesota. And they also work and own many, or partner with the other programs we do, such as our school, which is where our calendar is at. So now all of our games are automatically, and their tickets are already set up. It's been very, very slick. Two weeks ago, the governance board from the CLC, which is made up of ADs, superintendents, and principals, voted to all go to it. So we'll all be on the same thing, all the fees are the same, everything's exactly the same. So that'll be by next September. It would have been quicker, but some of them have contracts with other online ticketing companies. What questions you have? Four activities.
Questions for Derek? Thank you for the report. All right, then I'll move to our next report, which is Kirby Anderson.
We have not had a finance committee meeting since we last talked a month ago. We have not had an activities meeting, and we have not had an education foundation meeting. And we will be meeting on Thursday with that foundation. So that's my report, short and sweet.
Any questions for Kirby?
There you go.
Okay, then we'll move to Melanie Cole.
Okay, well, I'm gonna try and follow suit, just keep it short and sweet. We had our special education cooperative board meeting today at noon. And the agenda was largely focused on the different tasks that need to be accomplished for the upcoming splits. Finding office space, potential classroom space, all that kind of thing. So that was, that was primarily it. And we did find a tier one special ed teacher, so no experience in the field. And she will be split between two classrooms at point six-four percent time. So progress. There's a, there's one teacher in there now, but still, still struggling with personnel issues. So that was primarily that. And then region one, we had the meeting, oh yeah, and that special I co-op, we reviewed the audit today and the budget and approved both of those. Region one, we spent a lot of time on our audit last meeting and then talked about the different programming that the co-op there does with the schools and nothing out of the ordinary.
That's it. Any questions for Melanie? Thanks. Okay, then we'll move to Missy Hermes.
Okay, ALC committee has not met, but the staff development committee met last Monday, December fourth. And probably the main thing that the committee did is go over the results of a staff survey that was put out after the staff development day, which was on December first. And so the results were very gratifying. And I, I hope everybody that's on that committee that has worked hard to put that staff development together should be really satisfied. So one of the main speaker for the cultural competency training was Phyllis Braxton, who is based out of the Twin Cities. And almost across the board, people rated her presentation as excellent with a lot of takeaways that they can actually use, and they're excited. She's coming back for part two in March. And so that was really great to hear that. And then also going out over, because the format of the staff development day in March will be similar, one presenter and then some breakout sessions. And so some of the breakout sessions that we're gonna be seeing include, well, the READ Act, which is on everybody's mind and literacy, and then things like trauma-sensitive strategies. I guess that's similar to the ACEs. So, and then staff mental health and asking Jen Kohler, our school nurse, if she would be willing to present to grades seven through twelve on ADs, emergency meds, the new Narcan of ALC and so on. So it was a good meeting.
Any questions for Missy? Thanks. My reported short two wellness, we're meeting again in January. And buildings and grounds has not formally, I think, been reported. Thank you. So we'll move to Melanie.
Yeah, Minnesota High School League, they met Thursday, the thirtieth. Couple of things that they approved. One was their belief statement for regional representation. They just say consistent with the organization's structure of the league. State-level postseason participation show, recognize and support opportunities for participants and teams from all geographic regions of the state. And there's been some discussion about seeding and how it should be seeded. And, and I think sometimes the metro believes that they should probably have the top seeds and then everybody else from outstate Minnesota should probably be on the other side of that. And so anyway, it was just good to, to get that support from the Minnesota High School League Board. Another thing that they talked about, and maybe Derek knows, just on the sense of the football advisory committee is seeking a seed process that covers nine-man through class five and two geographic halves. So I take it via north-south, or is that east-west?
I don't know which direction they're gonna go, but football is one of those where, again, it's very geographic, the first round. You're playing a help state and then start to go down, which, again, kind of supports, is supported by their belief that we are a geographical state tournament. It's, you know, there's a big push to seed it all out. And then, so you may have a team on a Tuesday night or a Thursday night that first week that's traveling from northern Minnesota to southern Minnesota to play in that first round. It's different than other tournaments. Football tournament is one day a week for like three or four weeks. For basketball and hockey, you play back-to-back nights, and you have a tournament, a three-day tournament. So that's why it's geographical, because it's one game a week. You have to travel and then come back home, so. But the, the metro very much wants to seed it out, because they do believe that they would have higher seats and their home games during that. And, and some of them, yeah, I'll leave that out. But that, that is the reason, that's where that's coming from.
Thanks, Derek. The girls tennis advisory committee is seeking to expand to three. The third enrollment classification, right now there's just two, and so they're trying to get that third classification. If approved, implementation would be in a twenty-five, twenty-six school year, following the established competitive section placement schedule. That has to go through a process and that, but I'm hoping it does get approved. It's long overdue that they should have had three classes. It just seems, I don't know, it just seems like if they never can get it done, and I hope they do finally get that done, because then Fergus would not necessarily have to play brainard in the same section, which is totally just different size and Saint Cloud. And yeah, it's kind of interesting that we don't have a breakdown to three sections. And then the other thing that was just kind of interesting is the, the committee reported that fall paid attendance showed an increase of more than thirty-two thousand during the state tournament this year.
Wow.
So yeah, so there's a lot of people that came to the state tournaments, so it's just good to see too, so. And that's all I have to report.
Any questions for Matt? Steve's not here tonight, so we'll move on to superintendent Drake.
Thank you. Just a quick note, first of all, good evening, but a quick note on Steve Biggess, had he been here, would I have reported with the DAC rec? That the bulk of that meeting was done reviewing new course requests on the high school side, which were presented to the board in a work session, so. So thank yous to go out. First of all, I'm just very appreciative of the relationship we have with our local police department and fire department. And so we've, we're active communications with them, and especially with our police department this year. They've been doing some safety training with our staff, which has been, been excellent. And we just appreciate all the time that they've devoted to making sure that we've got safe protocols and procedures. I want to also thank our technology department. They're normally busy, but there's been some extra things on their plate this year. The implementation and the decisions leading up to the Crisis Go app has been a lot of extra work on their plate, and appreciate all they did there. Mike Donahoe has been working really hard in upgrading. Mike Donahoe has been working really hard in upgrading, working with vendors to upgrade our intercom system in Roosevelt and KSS, and especially pushing some vendors that were not going to fulfill what they told us in terms of a timeline, and so Mike pushed back on some of that, and we are back on schedule, thanks to some of his work, and I just really appreciated that, so. By the, when we returned from the winter break here, we should have notable improvements in some of our communication abilities with our intercom system. Really a fantastic choral concert, the place was packed, but what I appreciated of it was the amount of music that was sung by our students, and you could tell that the whole production was very well rehearsed, because the transitions were very, very crisp. And that was a lot of students with a lot of transitions getting them up and off the stage, so terrific performance, and appreciate the community coming out for that, it was a wonderful evening and helped put us in the holiday spirit. This is the aftermath of the concert, basically, and so our choir students went into the auditorium and spent some time cleaning up, just as an act of service to the school. And again, we talk about contributing citizens as part of our vision for auter graduates, and I just really appreciate they're taking the time to go in and do that. As the board's well aware, we're usually a person or so short on the custodial side, and so them taking that on was a really nice piece on behalf of the school. Some congratulatory notes, we had a middle school knowledgeable team that took first place out of 18 at a recent competition, and I think their season's basically wrapped up now, but that's absolutely fantastic performance. Eighteen teams is a lot to finish first in, so congratulations. We also had the Tom Uvis invite that took place on Saturday, and our boys swim team took second in that invite, and so congratulations to the team, and then we had some stellar individual performances in a relay as well. So congratulations, great start. We are, I think officially, completely in now on our winter season, so lots and lots of activity going down at Roosevelt, going on down at Roosevelt, and in the Gold Gym here, and looking forward to seeing the athletes in all those competitions throughout the season. We are looking, or we're continuing to hire, so I like to put that out in front of the community on occasion as a reminder. So we're looking for special ed paras, mechanical maintenance, and custodians, so if people listening are aware of anyone that's looking for a great opportunity, please reach out to the district, and we would be glad to have a conversation with you. A few upcoming events, we have a fifth grade concert at noon, so that's midday, and then a sixth through eighth grade choir concert coming up on the 18th at 7:00 PM, and the high school orchestra concert at 5:00 PM on the 20th. And then Tuesday, tomorrow is a big day for sports fans, we're hosting a triangular, and then we have boys basketball here against St. Cloud Apollo. On the student learning side, this was a neat post on our Facebook page, it's a mousetrap car. So basically, it's a mousetrap, a platform, and a couple of old CDs for the wheels, and a little fishing line that wraps around the axle, and it's all a piece of mechanics, and so it was nice that that video was made, and a nice way for students to be creative and learn some of those concepts of physics and mechanics in the same opportunity, so. With that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Questions for Superintendent Drake? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll move into our general consent items, we have the minutes from our November 27th, 2023 board meeting, and then to Kirby for the bills and treasures report.
Yes, we'll start with the treasures report. Our fund balance is up slightly from last year, but down a little bit from last month. And one of the reasons, one of the reasons it's up a little bit this year compared to last year is we have less enrollment in stride, and I think two years ago, we had $700,000 in buyout in December, and last year was $400,000 in buyout, and the reconciliation payment initiative was like $30,000. So there's some ramifications to that lower enrollment. On the bills, went through bills before the meeting today, and a couple of million dollars on bond gave us, that was another reason why the fund balance was down slightly. We had a number of items that were paid for, like the outer outlet this time of year is pretty busy, lots of referees, and lots and lots of referees, hockey officials, and so on. Go through, when we get into the detail, it's interesting, sometimes we have, the Bio Corporation would have been just a $357 bill that would have been paid last year, but now that we know the detail, now we know that there's preserved sheep brain, preserved cow eye, and preserved beef kidneys in that particular payment, and a double fetal pig, so there you go. Good to know these things. You want to take note of the new furniture, there's new furniture in the senior commons area that we paid for, the tables, chairs, booths, and also in the pool area, so that was about $27,000 to cool crips. Partner consultants, I think we did pay with their $4,400,000, that was for the survey of the district office needs, and then school perceptions, who we met with earlier today, $32,000 went to them. And so that's the highlights, if you want to call it that, of our bills. The other thing I didn't mention in the treasures report is that the community ed fund is, we did make that $250,000 transfer to them, and then they had another $134,000 of non-public pupil aid that went in this one, so their balance is back up in the $500,000 range. So that's the treasures report and the bills. We'll have to figure out someone to do the bills next month, because I think the Anderson bills do January 9th, and our meeting wouldn't be until after that, so we'll have to work something out.
Alright, we'll move to Melanie for personnel.
Good evening, everyone, just a few items, support staff presentations, we have Danielle Knutson and Justine Walbotany, both special education paraprofessionals, that have resigned here since our last board meeting. Support staff hire, we've also hired Darcy Jerkensen to fill in one of the positions here, she started today. Then we have some overload contracts with Rebecca Lynn, Angela Nord, Lisa Schlossner, and Andrew Kowalski, and they're all special ed teachers, and just due to their caseload and such, we have some small overloads for them. And then under support staff contract change, I did a comparable work study and worked with our head custodians, and would request a grade level pay change to a six for the night lead custodian, and a grade level pay change to a seven for the head custodians. The basic changes were their leadership evaluations, hiring, things that are added on to their job description that would change the grade level to the next number, basically, so I would request board approval for those items.
Alright, thank you. May I get a motion to approve our general consent items?
I'll make the motion.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Those consent items are approved. We don't have any old business, so we'll move on to new business. We have the 2022-2023 Fergus Falls Public Schools World Best Workforce Report to approve, which was presented by Amelia at the beginning of our meeting. May I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in, are, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. Then we have our 2024-2025 high school course proposals, we have Advanced Studio Pottery, Astrami, Earth Science 9A and 9B, and Introduction to CAD, which we learned about at our last board work session. May I get a motion to approve those courses, those proposals?
Some vote.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Proposal is approved. Then we'll move on to Fergus Falls Community Arena user agreement fees. Season January 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2024, and then October 2024 through December 31st, 2024. May I get a motion to approve those fees?
Some vote.
In a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
The staff presents about a 9.3% increase, probably one of the main reasons for the increase is because they hired a, the city hired a full-time person to operate the chiller, and so we are being charged a portion of those expenses, so, so, yeah.
Sure.
We're good.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is, agreement is approved. Then we have a farm lease agreement between Fergus Falls School District, I S D 544, and Llewaine and Beverly Rockness, effective January 1st, 2024 through December 1st, 2024. May I get a motion to approve that agreement?
Some vote.
In a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That agreement is approved. Then we have a resolution of the School Board Governing Board Supporting Form A Application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Whereas Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the Fergus Falls Public Schools Governing Board recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school districts to provide seminars, train, and training opportunities, or support for specific school functions for students, faculty, members, and officials, and others who are involved in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Fergus Falls Public Schools Governing Board supports the school's application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. Could someone offer that resolution, move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
May I get a second?
Second.
And Missy, will you take role?
Yes, Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lynn.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Emily Knutson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll move to our two public meetings, the first one is our Technology Plan and Internet Safety Policy, presented by Superintendent Drake.
Alright, I will read a statement on this. As internet access became a well-established practice in public education, school districts have adopted technology plans for the implementation of internet access. District Policy Number 524, Internet Acceptable Use and Safety does govern the use of the internet for the purposes of education to include classroom activities, educational research, and professional or career development activities, and uses deemed necessary for the operation of the organization. As part of this policy, the district utilizes internet content filtering software, HAPARA, to block access through the school's network to visual depictions that would be considered inappropriate or harmful. The policy also provides, though not exhaustive, guidance for the acceptable use of the internet. Policy 524 includes guidance regarding, one, parental technology provider notification, two, school-issued devices, and three, screen time limitations for children in preschool and kindergarten. The most recent review and adoption of the policy took place on July 17th, 2023.
Alright, thank you. Then we will move to our Fergus Falls Public Schools Taxes Payable 2024, presented by Kirby and Matt, our finance director.
Good evening, welcome to tonight's public hearing to review the 2324 budget, which was approved in June, as well as the proposed property tax levy. Tonight's meeting is generally referred to as the Truth and Taxation Meeting. And so what we'll look at tonight, as I mentioned again, the budget and the levy, and then also factors affecting the levy. This will be the levy that we pay our taxes on in calendar year 2024, and it's the revenue that we will receive as a district in fiscal year 25, which starts July 1st of next year. So first of all, here's a quick glance at the budget and where fiscal '23 ended up at, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, because our auditors reviewed it with us about a month ago. You can see there, for the general fund, we had a beginning fund balance of $14,643,000, audited revenues of $37.8 million, audited expenditures of $37.6, and an ending fund balance of $14.9 million. So total operating funds, ending balance of $15,545, and then total of all fines, if we include debt service, a total of $16,231,000. Then here's a glance at fiscal year '24, this, again, this was adopted in June. So audited revenues that we're expecting, or sorry, not audited, but budgeted revenues that we're expecting is $39,341,000, expenses $39,344,000. So we're actually looking at a balanced budget for the most part, so with projected ending fund balance of $14,887,000. Food service, there again, balanced budget, projecting to come in at $790,000 for the ending fund balance. Community ed was, has been projecting a negative balance of $235,000, but as Kirby just mentioned, we did the transfer just this last month, so that should bring that out of the negative there. So total operating fund for the balance projected is $15,442,000. Total offense, if we include debt service, $16,400,000. And then on the bottom there, you can see that the outstanding debt as of end of June this year was $17,675,000. Pupils or ADM, which stands for average daily membership, was $3,087,000. Compared to fiscal year '22, that was $3,115,000, so we had about a 1% drop in our pupils. And cost per pupil on this report is $11,802 versus $11,842 in the prior year. Here's a quick recap of the expenditures that we budgeted. The orange portion is the biggest portion there, 69% is salaries and benefits. The blue portion is purchased services, that's 23%. Purchased services includes things like transportation, IQ online services, the contractors that we hire, our special ed co-op services that we pay for, property insurance and those types of things. The mustard yellow color, I guess you could say, the 5% there is supplies and materials. Largely that is custodial and HVAC supplies, but it does also include curriculum and miscellaneous supplies. The gray portion there is 3%, that is other costs that, for the most part, is IQ indirect or oversight fees, as well as just some miscellaneous dues. Here's a quick look at revenue by source, the state is where we receive most of our revenue from, which is about 76%. I'll skip the blue section for now, the yellow portion is about 4%, that's other local and county. What that includes is activity, ticket sales, user fees, rental income, adult meals, a la carte meals, community ed programs. 3% there is the gray, and that's federal, so, just the title programs and those types of things. And then the blue portion here is what we're talking about tonight, it's the levy. So that generally runs 17% to 19% for the last couple of years. Here's our proposed payable '24 levy, and this is what was adopted in September as the preliminary levy, there have not been any changes to it, and so overall, what we're looking at is a 10.27% increase. The payable levy that we propose is $8,459,502. So here you can see the levy as the blue columns, and so you can see it is a slight increase from last year, but what's most noticeable on this chart is the orange bars, that's our property values, and so I'll talk a little bit more about the impact of the property values on the next few slides, but the green line then is your tax rate history, and so this is basically taking the levy, the blue column, divided by the property value, the orange column, and so you can see that our tax rate is up just slightly. So now, to talk a little bit more about the orange columns there, the rise of the property values. This is one of many factors that affect our taxes, and especially for a school district, because a lot of the revenue that we receive from the state is based on an equalization factor, and so the richer our district is in property wealth, and thus, when our property values go up, it means that we're gonna be paying more as taxes, we as taxpayers, it means we're gonna receive less money as aid from the state, and so it really shifts the property tax, really shifts the burden onto the taxpayers, and we receive less aid from the state. So we're especially seeing that now with the increase in property values. So like, on our levy limitation report, it shows that we have an increase in property values of 20%, and so that's huge, and we are seeing that. Our financial advisor, L, has actually mentioned that there's some districts who will not receive any increases in their revenue this year because of declining enrollment, but yet their tax levy is going up, and so that's just really how property values are affecting the distribution of where our revenue comes from. Of course, then, who pays the taxes also changes when we have increases in property Of course, then who pays the taxes also changes when we have increases in property valuation. So let's say if I might have this set portion of the pie, but if my value goes up a lot more than, let's say Susie Q is across the street from me, I'm going to have a slightly bigger portion of pie and my property taxes will go up proportionately. And so your property valuations have a large impact on your taxes, is what I'm trying to say. There's other factors that do affect your property taxes. So the first one, we already talked about, that's the valuations. Also, secondly, there's legislative changes from Minnesota Legislature. So every couple of years, we see those. And there's thirty-nine pages of formulas on the levy limitation report that go into effect in how our taxes and levy is calculated. Third thing is the change in enrollment numbers. So of course, as our enrollment goes down, the revenue goes down. And then also the adjustment for prior years for average daily membership. So once the final numbers come in, MDE or Minnesota Department of Education adjusts how much revenue we receive based on the actual numbers from the prior year or two. And then, of course, there are some local decisions that do affect our taxes. And so this includes, for example, Lincoln Phase Two. But a lot of the factors, we don't have any control over. So if your property value stayed the same, if you had a two hundred thousand dollar house, which was the average home value in two thousand twenty-three, if you had a two hundred thousand dollar home, your taxes would have gone up sixteen dollars. For two thousand twenty-four, the average home value is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So if you had a home value, let's say two hundred and twenty-five thousand on the start year, your taxes go up by eighteen. But this is assuming your property value doesn't change. And of course, we all know our property values are changing. And so, but this is what it would be based on just the impacts of our levy.
Can you give my test like?
Oh, sure.
Sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Do they tell you why the agricultural, because of some legislative stuff?
Oh, sure. And I, I'm sorry, and I only touched on the residential portion. So the residential values increased by about twenty percent, but the agricultural, commercial, industrial, those did not increase as much. And so here you'd actually, you can see that there'd be a decrease in taxes. Yep, good question. Yeah, so that's the other thing too, is it shifts the property tax burden to more residential taxpayers rather than commercial and industrial.
And that works with the seasonal recreational residential too.
Cabin.
Mm-hmm. And so this year, the counties were required to send out statements in the mail saying how the tax levies compared to in surrounding cities and school districts. And so there are certainly some higher than us, but also some lower. So what I did is I asked Elers to put together the taxes that we would pay on a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home. Because what the county sent out, it was only based on your current levy versus the proposed levy and showing the difference between the two. And so it's really hard to compare what your actual, what it equates to in terms of dollars to the homeowner. And so this really shows that. So last year, I showed this, and we were right in the middle of pack. This year, we actually improved one notch or dropped one notch down. So you can see that Underwood, Pelican Rapids, and Detroit Lakes would pay slightly less than Fergus Falls School District or Underwood. If you're in Breckenridge, Ross, A, West Central Area, Ashburn, Campbell Tinta, your taxes from the school district would be slightly higher. And again, this is for a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home. So next steps, I would ask the board to adopt the final levy. Tonight will be eight million, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and two dollars. Then I can certify it to the county auditor, submit the certification compliance to the Minnesota Department of Revenue, and then send it off to MDE. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, Superintendent?
I think you mentioned that some of the ag, and that one slide, some of the ag and some of the, some of the seasonal went down. But that's only on the levy side. So any valuations that the county increased, would correct all of those up substantially? If all non-value went up, or if Lake Shore went up?
Yep, yep, correct.
Or the board made up for those reductions in levy?
Yes. Any other questions, comments?
We have Paula. Paula questions. Paula, me. Yeah?
Does anyone else have any questions? I can try to answer.
Yeah, real.
Sure.
Alan Lee Bush, relatively new resident of the area. We do have Lake Shore property. We're not full-time residents previous to last year. So we now have change in our status. And when we got the letter, it looked like there was a disproportionate share of an increase in taxes going to recreational owners versus full-time residential owners. And I can't see that from here. I can't see the percentages you've got there. You're saying something about a decrease in the rate. But it looked like the letter that we got indicated there was about a three times the amount increase for recreational owners versus full-time residential owners. And I'd like to get a little bit more clarity on that.
And so in your property tax statement, was that for the city, county, or school district, or all three?
All three.
Okay. This is only based on if there's no change in value. So have you called the county at all to ask them about it?
The county meeting is tomorrow night.
Oh, okay. They're the ones that actually calculate taxes, so they'd be able to explain a lot better. And they determine your tax amounts?
It appeared to be coming from the school, the new school building fund proposal. And is that regulated by the county also, or is that by the school? So is it like you got something going?
Oh, you're talking about the survey?
Oh, the survey?
You're talking about that survey that came out?
Yes. Yeah. Okay.
That's got to be voted on by the community.
Yeah, so that's not part of this yet. The only, the major thing that we did here was the improvements at Lincoln Phase Two. And so some of that's being included in here. But there's nothing for a new school.
Can you tell us about when that would be or how that all works?
So we'll go out to vote May fourteenth, I believe, possibly. And then it just depends on if the voters approve it or not. If they approve it, then we would go forward with building it. But if they don't approve it, then we don't have a project.
So how do we get in on the discussion on that, so we understand that better?
Like tax impacts and stuff?
Well, that particular project that was proposed in that packet that we were supposed to, how do we get in on that discussion?
Oh, it's Superintendent Drew.
So we'll have numerous opportunities through public forums for the public to come and engage and listen about the project, ask questions, seek clarification. That'll happen shortly after the first of the year. We'll start rolling some of those out with, again, a May fourteenth anticipated day when the election would take place.
And we'll be notified by mail, or how do we find out?
We will publicize it as part of our board pieces. I'll include information in the Daily Journal. Those will be our primary and our website.
So the school board website.
School district's website.
I'll say that you're not out of the loop. We didn't do a lot of education prior to the survey going out because we kind of wanted to get like a preliminary feel. So after the first of the year, there's going to be a lot of opportunity and pieces going on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if you're, you know, if you're concerned that you might miss some of the outreach, feel free to leave your contact information, email address, whatever, and be happy to make sure you are getting that information so that you can, because we just do a much better job as a board when we have all the types of community members in, or there are people who just want to learn what's going on, or people who have some real concerns they want to bring to the table. We make a lot better decisions when we get a good variety.
You've been on both sides of the equation now, so it's interesting to us to find out a little bit more about your funding.
Yeah. Very good. Yeah, thank you for coming.
Yeah, feel free to call me too if you have questions on it. But I would encourage you to talk to the county first on how the taxes were calculated, but then certainly call me. Thank you. Yep.
Thanks, Superintendent.
You bet.
Okay, well, we'll move on then. So our next item of action is the levy for taxes payable twenty-twenty-four. Can I get a motion to include?
I'm on it.
Oh. Right here, right now. To the amount of eight million, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and two dollars, ninety-two cents. Can I get a motion to approve the levy?
I make motion that we approve the taxes payable levy and you want to just?
Can I get a second?
One second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That has been approved. So we are going to move into a closed session. So could I get a motion to close the session as per Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision point three to discuss the school board evaluation of Superintendent Drew?
Some moved. One second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Our session is closed.